Turn the arrow.
Okay.
So we come to order and stand for the Budget Allegiance.
Budget Allegiance to-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got Lori's copy here since it's a little more readable.
Yeah.
Okay. Has everybody read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve last month's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
And then close the regular meeting and open the adoption meeting. Alright.
Alright, can you get a motion to close the meeting and-
No, we don't have a mo-
We don't have a motion then?
No, you just tell them.
Okay, we're gonna close the meeting and begin our work on our budget meeting.
So all this is, is what I read last month. It's the exact same thing. If you want, let Michael look at that, he was here last month. I made Lori a copy last meeting. So all it is, is passing the totals for the funds, the main funds. And this is the resolution, so just need a motion to adopt the 2026 budget.
Where are we gonna have an executive meeting on that?
Well, you can't have an executive session on budget, that's public information.
Oh, okay.
It would be a special meeting, but this is, like I said last month, this is just to adopt these totals, it doesn't have anything to do with the breakdown.
Oh, okay. So-
So this is what I read at last month's public hearing.
Okay.
So, we just need to adopt it, because it has to be adopted by November 3rd.
Oh. Okay.
Do you wanna do it, or do you want me to? Choose your reading.
So if we adopt this, is that it then? Or can it be discussed in any way, shape, or form?
These, the grand totals can't be changed. Now, how it's broke down within the general fund, that can be changed throughout the year.
Okay.
That money can be moved around, that's why we do those transfers at the end of the year when I have something that's negative and I gotta move money. So what you're adopting now is just these grand totals for the general fund, local road street, MBH. And from my budget workshop, we're not gonna get any more than what I have in here, so.
Okay, then. Any more discussion on that?
Honestly, I haven't had time to really look at the light items within each thing, so, you know, this is my busiest time of work, I'm working about 80 hours a week, so.
Yeah, okay.
You're crazy.
I guess we'll make a motion to approve it, I don't really have much of a choice.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And the salary ordinance is just the raise that you guys talked about for David, since he passed his test last meeting. And I said I would have the amended salary ordinance ready for you to vote on. So you can see right there, his pay got changed from 22 to 24.
Okay.
And that's the only change that is made. So you just need a motion to approve, and I put effective date September 19th, which was the beginning of last pay period, which you agreed to.
Okay, can we get a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended salary ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay. Okay, so we can now close the budget discussion.
Oh wow, I guess we actually should've done that before we did the amended salary ordinance.
But now we can move on to unfinished business.
So we'll just say that Michael motion-
I motion to close it.
Adjourn that budget. Lori?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We did that a little backwards, but it's one of those kinda days.
It is.
Okay, the water rate study.
That would be Mr. Klein Peter.
Alright, do you want me to just present from my seat?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright. So council, thank you very much for the opportunity to help you with utility. As you know, this is what we do, this type of red butter here. So, we spent a lot of time with Trina going through this, and so I'm gonna kinda walk it through. I won't go through the end level detail, I'll hit the high points for you. So, it's a rate study on your water utility. And I'll just kinda go through, so we've got a table of schedules there. If we go to the very first schedule, we'll, that's what everybody wants to know is, hey, do I need a rate increase or not? So we would recommend on line 37, 7.17% rate increase. And that would take your rate, and we usually quote 4,000 gallons, that's kinda like the datum. And so that would bring a 4,000 gallon from 4104 to 4398.
Two dollars and nine and four cents.
Yeah, and a lot of your residents, they're not consuming 4,000 gallons, especially your elderly adult, they're not consuming 4,000 gallons, so it'd need less for them. On this schedule here, what you'll see is, we're projecting your, what we call your revenue requirements. How much money do you need to meet your obligation for utility? That's what we do here. I actually came over and Trina and I actually sat down and went line by line through this, but she really wanted me to present to the council, which I was happy to do. If you look also at the very bottom, that line 38, one of the critical elements is to make sure you have sufficient coverage, especially because you've got outstanding debt. Your minimum coverage is 1.25, you guys are north of three, so you guys are good there. We do make adjustments, and I'll talk about some of the adjustments we make. If we turn the page to schedule two, what you see there is the outstanding debt against the utility, which is just north of $200,000. We look at that for opportunity to refund those, is can we do something better for you, put you in a better financial position? You guys have got a little over $200,000 at 2%, that's 2020 bonds, that's really good. So there's nothing really you wanna do with that. So, schedule three, schedule three, we look and say, hey, do you have enough money, and we call it working capital, to pay your bills and send your bills out, receive revenue back, things of that nature. You should have at least 18,500, you guys have got over 40,000, so you guys are good to go there. So you've got really sufficient working capital, is what we're telling you there. The next, schedule four, is kinda the same thing, but in a different form. And it tells you, you really got over 100 days of working capital. So again, you've got good working capital there. Schedule five is your tariff sheet, and that's all your bills, all your charges there. So we got schedule five, and right after schedule five, I've got a really clean schedule five. If you wanted to implement a rate increase, this one here is the one that you could put with your ordinance, so it's nice and clean for you. All you gotta do is copy it and put it with your ordinance, and you're good to go there. Again, we met with Trina, and she wanted us to make some corrections, like the reconnection fee. We made some changes on the reconnection fee to help clean some things up for her, so that worked out really well.
When they got rid of that UTR tax, and they, the rates went down just a teeny, teeny bit. Because I did my tax like I was supposed to, and included the reconnect fee, he had to lower that in that new water rate study, so now it's like an odd sense instead of an even dollar amount. So we just put it back up to the even dollar amount, which was like a 70 cent increase. So the reconnect fee wasn't that big of a change. See, it was that, now it's that.
So, schedule seven, so Trina, thanks for clarifying that. Schedule seven is your revenue for the utility that you come in. One of the things we look at is consistency. So your operating receipts are approximately $170,000 a year. You've got some other revenues that augment that, but the good thing about that, that's very consistent. So, so again, you're doing a really good job there. There's some non-operating receipts, a lot of, there's a lot of noise there with a lot of the work and financing and grants and everything you've done there. But really, your operating receipts are really good and stable. When we go to your disbursements, again, we really went line by line through your 2024 disbursements and talked with Trina about, should we make any adjustments these? I mean, normally annual adjustments are 3% on most things in the current environment. We made some adjustments based on her guidance. And then on schedule nine, that's where we put your receipts and your disbursements together, and we say, hey, did utility make any money, or did it consume cash, how did it do? And if you look at the very bottom, we, you've gotta look back at least three years, we looked back at four years for you. In 2021, you made 44,000, in '22, you lost 38. In '23, you're about broke even with 4,000. Last year, you lost 76,000, so that was a big darn deal there, so.
And that was all the stuff we had to purchase and fix that didn't get done in that project.
Yes.
So, that's why.
Yeah, so what we wanna do, and again, that's why we recommend about a 7%. We really need to replenish some of those revenues. So I think, point being is, I think this was a really good time to do a rate study. And my recommendation from this would be that the council would consider implementing a rate increase. You know, we're sitting here in October, you've got November, December, so you do have time to implement a rate increase and say, it is effective one January. January's a really good time to put a rate increase in place. It makes your numbers track very well, because you're like, oh, that year, that whole year has been impacted by that rate increase, by like the 7%. So it's really something for the council to consider. So that's schedule nine. Schedule 10, that's your adjustments that we've made, and those adjustments are either based on feedback from Trina. Typical 3%, on salaries, we made a 5% adjustment. So that's your schedule 10. Schedule 11, these are the fund balances in the utility. So you've got an operating fund, your bond and interest, depreciation, your deposits, and your debt service reserve funds. So you gotta kinda have all these funds for the things that your utility is doing. So your operating fund, if you look at the very top left number, 139,608, that was a 2020 balance, end of year. And you can see at the bottom of that column, you're sitting at like 47. So it tells you there was some consumption of cash in the utility over those years. And what we wanna do is build that back up till you have a good, strong balance sheet. So I think this rate study will get you there. Your bond and interest, so you're doing really good on your bond and interest, so keep that up. Your depreciation is sitting at 10,958. One of the things that we recommend, we recommend, and it's actually reflected on schedule one, that you add $8,706 per year to that. So you can take the 8,000, divide it by 12, you can do it monthly, or if you wanted it semi-annually, but that would be one of the transfers that we would recommend you do. The thing about the depreciation fund is, a lot of your funding agencies, they say, hey, instead of coming to us and asking us for millions of dollars to do improvements, you are authorized to do improvements based on cash receipts. And so they give you short-lived assets, depreciation, repair replacement, those are kinda all the same thing. And so there's some rules of thumb and some ways that we determine those. A lot of times it'll flow down from the engineers, that'll tell us, this is what we plan for the utility. And we'll do that when we do an asset management plan. And then sometimes there's a percentage, some percentage assumptions we can make. So in the depreciation, we recommend about adding 8,000 a year. If you look at that line from 2020 to 2024, there's really been no increase, no receipts or disbursements in that. And that is a good place for you to go. I mean, you always don't have to draw revenue from your operating to do some repairs, pump rebuildings and things like that. This depreciation is a good place for that to go. Customer deposits, so customer deposits, they look really good. Just as a reminder, customer deposits are restricted, so you gotta kinda leave those things alone. Now, you can take customer deposits and put it into like the Indiana Trust, so that's the LJIP for the state of Indiana, the local government investment pool. So for those funds that have just gotta sit there, you might as well sit there and make some money off of it. So you're authorized to do that. Your debt service reserve is a requirement that comes with your debt issuance. That's really good, so keep that up. And really, that kinda covers your fund balances as you have. The last thing we do is we look, we look at a forward projection, year on year, on where we think you'll wind up, where the utility wind up. So this is kinda your pro forma, you might've heard that term before. The far left column is what we call a fully projected test year, and then we say, hey, what do the years look like for there? There's two things we look at. Line 21, which is your debt service coverage, and line 27, which is, are we making money or are we consuming money? If you look at 21, we've gotta keep that over 1.25. And so if you look, 2029 is when that drops down to like 1.25. So it's like, yeah, before then, you probably oughta be having another look at your rates. The last thing we look at too is your net revenues. And it looks like in 2028, you're about at break even, you're losing like $500, but we call that a break even. So I would say somewhere around 2027, 2028, we'd wanna come back and take a look at everything and say, yeah, everything's tracking well, let's keep on it, or we maybe need to do something, so.
And in actuality, our ordinance does state that we're supposed to have a rate study done. I think it's every, it's either every three years or every five years. It just wasn't enforced in years past.
Ah.
With everything that had been going on over the past two years?
The projects?
Yeah, as far as the three years, as far as on the projects and watching the balances, everything just kept going down, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we knew what the problem was, but yet as far as to recover from it?
Well, and if you even go back 30 years, there wasn't really any increases in the water rates until, what, 2015?
Probably.
And there should've been one-
Yeah.
-within the 20 years before that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I tell you, we went through COVID, COVID had some really high inflationary factors, and they were kinda sticky, so things stayed high. And so, a lot of utilities are doing some catch-up there. So that's a rate study, just a couple other things I was gonna touch on. So one, I think the utility's in fairly good shape. I think a rate increase, and you guys will be good to go. The only other thing is, there's an asset management plan requirement that came out mid-year. It was put in effect, and every utility has to have an asset management plan. Every four years, it has to be refreshed, stuff like that. So just, I'll give you a heads up for that, because that's now a requirement that's coming out. Another thing is, everybody's familiar with SEA1, Senate Enrollment Act 1, which is really gonna reduce the revenue coming to cities and towns. So a lot of councils like yourself are like, what can we do? What things can we do? And we're doing a bunch of things in a bunch of other communities, because each community is very unique. I would say for your community, one of the things that you could do is implement what's called a PILOT, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with what a PILOT is. PILOT stands as an acronym for Payment in Lieu of Taxes. And it's one of the authorizing ways that you can move money from a utility to the general fund. And it's, there's a methodology to do this, but it comes at the expense of increased rates. But what happens is, as your rates go up, you generate revenue in the utility, and then twice a year, mid-year and end-of-year, you make a transfer between the utility to the general fund. So that's a way for the revenue in the general fund as it's going down, for you to kinda augment some of that and kinda put it back. So, that's called a PILOT, you can put a PILOT on every utility that you have. And again, if the revenue to the city or town is gonna be reduced, that means you're gonna have to reduce services. And if you don't wanna reduce services, then councils are saying, what can I do to augment that and to generate some revenue? One of those things is PILOT, so. I just throw that out there for you guys to think about it. I mean, because you might get to the point where it says, you know, we need $20,000 more. If we had $20,000 more, we could do X, Y, Z. So if, think about it, if that's something you wanna do, you can give me a call. We could talk to you more depth about what that could look like. And you can implement that at any point in time, just like a rate increase. So it's not like you gotta be doing it with the budget cycle. There's some other things that are very specific to the budget cycle, that you gotta do in line with that, so. And that's it.
I appreciate it.
Any questions?
So if you guys want to implement this, then it's been presented. I can have an ordinance prepared to be voted on at next council meeting, or if you wanna wait longer, then you just let me know. But it's been, this is the presentation.
Yeah.
So it can actually be passed at the next council meeting.
I'd like to pursue it, as far as to implement this.
Yeah, you can get somebody to do an ordinance.
Yeah.
I will, even if I got a copy and paste into the one that I have.
Yeah.
The new numbers.
If you send me what you have, I can help you out a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say, this is the presentation and the introduction of rates.
Right, right.
So from a terminology standpoint.
Exactly. Same, okay.
You guys agree with that, as far as getting this going?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll make, do we need a motion?
No.
We just have a hard time getting any ordinance done.
Yeah.
I know, there's like eight of them?
Yep.
That we've been waiting on?
So I will make sure that the ordinance gets done in one way or another, and it'll be ready to make a motion and be voted on next month.
Starting in January, correct, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, that's, because we gotta vote on it, and then it's gotta be put in the paper and run for 30 days before you can actually do the increase, right?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
That's all we-
We need all the other ordinances done, too.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, you be safe going home.
Yeah, take care.
Take care.
Alright.
And then I put the additional employee on there just to put it in y'all's heads that winter's gonna be coming up. And so you might wanna be thinking if you want to maybe advertise and get some applications, and see if you want to hire somebody before plowing's gonna have to be done, or if you wanna let David get overtime. But then, you know, if something unexpected happens, and he's busy with that, you're gonna have to find somebody else to come plow, or you're gonna have to call Doug or Mike to come and handle the water sewer situation, so he can plow.
Which is gonna wind up costing more on their operator.
So I just thought I would put it on there and put that in y'all's heads.
I don't mind doing the plowing, but I feel like it would rack up a lot of hours real quick.
Yeah, and I think we need to hire another employee, full-time.
I would, yeah. I would say the sooner the better, but.
Yep.
And I think we would get a better response and more responses if David just puts it on Facebook. And then caught spending money, because employment ads and the pladium item are not any more than at least $200.
Everybody looks at Facebook, so.
So that'll cost us money, and the last time we advertised, I think we got a total of two, maybe three, applications. And with that mishap of it getting put on Facebook a few months ago, I got four within two weeks.
It was a weekend.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, what about our part-timers?
Ron, I mean, Ron's not gonna do anything other than helping Moe, so he's not gonna be any help really, plowing. He will if he absolutely, if we absolutely are in a crunch and need him, he knows how to run the plow.
And I'd rather have a full-time employee doing it, that's gonna be more responsible and more consistent.
Need stability, need stability.
Dependable.
Right. Dependable, reliable, you know that they're gonna show up, just like, I mean, if snow's coming, David would show up. With the other ones, well, we're out of town, or we've got this, and this is their full-time job, this is what they're supposed to do, this is what they're hired to do, and they're gonna be there to do it.
Yep.
So I'm, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's fine to put it up there.
So you have their permission to put it up there? I'll put it on mine, too. Mine's not public, but.
You just want me to get with you tomorrow before I even post something?
Yeah, that'll work.
What the list and all that stuff, yeah.
Yep.
Of course, you're more comfortable. If anybody questions you personally, you can always-
Just tell them to call me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everything through the door, obviously she likes to phone call.
Okay, that's all I have on that.
Alright. Let's do the department reports, is there anything that needs to be discussed? I know we were talking about the, what was it, the, one of the trucks was messed up?
The dump truck.
Clutch on the dump truck.
Okay. Alright. Have we already taken it to Speedy Pete's, or?
The emergency brake was fixed on it the last time it was in. They looked at the clutch, and he said it was, that's when he said it was going out. It was in the beginning stages, but I mean, it's completely out now.
So this is just a draft?
Okay.
Of what?
Yeah, that was just him quoting it. I mean, the dump truck's still up at shop, but it's gotta get towed somewhere, I can't, it's too wide to get on our trailer.
Yeah, so we'll just-
And most places ain't, won't quote yet without actually looking at it, and we'd have to pay tow bills to tow it to them to look.
Yeah.
And I say maybe they should get a tow.
Generally, Speedy's the cheapest anyway.
Yeah, I say find somebody to tow it and get Speedy Pete's.
Speedy has a towing service?
Yeah, don't let them come get it and get it fixed.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Does Speedy Pete's?
Yeah, because he went and got Ezra's one, he wrecked it and couldn't drive it.
If they don't, then you get ahold of somebody else's, yeah, yeah, I would say so, yeah.
Okay, make your motion again.
I make a motion to have Speedy Pete's possibly tow it, and also get the repair done, get it taken care of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, well, we got that out of the way.
I think they may have a thing that-
I got a call from Jeff Heinlich, as far as the generator repair or services hasn't been done this year. He wanted to know if we want him to do that. It is a yearly thing that he does. I told him I'd mention it to you guys, I forgot to put it on the agenda, but.
I mean, he's always just done it, he's never, we've never asked.
I just told him, I said, well, I said, I think you've always done it, so I'd say do it, but I told him that I'd mention it to you guys before he does do it, so.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with him doing it.
Yeah, he's been doing it, so.
And he's familiar with it anyway, so.
Mm-hmm.
He knows the history on it. Yeah, okay.
I think Terrell's the only other one that has something that we need to vote on.
Yeah, do you wanna talk about it, or do you want me to?
Either way.
Go ahead. Do something today.
Do something today, thanks. So last month I put in there, we have, two of our body cameras have gone down. They're not working, one will not turn on at all. Any other one, the record button doesn't work. So they've been taken out of service, we only have five. We went through Stalker, is who Kerry went through. That was five years ago, they are completely out of warranty, they're not servicing them, they will not do anything with them. So out of the five, we're down to three. I've spent probably the last two weeks trying to get quotes for new body cameras. Some of them, two of them are in there, I could not get Axon to send me the third. I've been in constant communication with them, so I don't have a third. Um, my recommendation, and I'm sorry, he just sent me this at like four or forty-five.
I think I have one.
Do you? There's a, so there is an original one that was in there.
Oh no, I just have the ten thousand dollar one.
Yeah. So this ten eight camera is who we use to our dash camera. In all of our vehicles, so we already have, um, their operating system. We already have an account with them. Um, the dash cameras have been fantastic, no issues whatsoever. And we have their software, these come with a warranty, right now it's a one-year warranty. Um, I asked him what it would be if we wish to extend that past the year, and he is working on that number, but right now there's no yearly cost with them. And if you look at the Motorola solution ones, that is for five years, that is twenty thousand dollars will get us through five years. We have to renew it.
What's your opinion on the twenty thousand dollars for the five years? So something.
They're not gonna let you pay it yearly, that's upfront and he don't have it.
Yeah.
I guess I was asking if that was a good option.
No, I don't believe it would be. With, we are getting the same, I, I did a, a quote for five cameras, which is what we had, just to replace those. Um, and this one comes with the same thing that the Motorola's do.
Yeah, totally, only difference is the warranty.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I believe Trina and I spoke, we may be able to come up with.
Yeah, he can, uh, he has part of it in his equipment fund. Because he hasn't used very much of it this year and then the remainder can be taken out of L L E C E, which is only for the. Marshals Department.
You guys have this, you want to see this?
I got one, thank you.
Did you get one, did you get, okay. All right, good.
The ten eight is a, is a pretty good system, you know, I used them, well, we used them back when.
I want to say I've paid invoices through the fire department for them.
Yeah, you know, um, the first ones Kerry got, it was a newer company and two years in, he. Didn't even have any kind of warranty, they wouldn't service anything, this company's been around for a while, so.
I, I can tell you that just trying to call Motorola and Axon, I haven't been able to. Um, ten eight, I can really call the number listed and somebody answers, probably second or third ring. Um, they emailed me back in forty minutes for any issues and that's the same thing with. We wanted a different mount for one of the cars and our service representative was on it immediately. Just send me pictures, show me what you want and I'll send it to you. So getting in touch with them is very easy and they are very quick to respond.
Well, you know what you need, so.
It will completely integrate with the in-car cameras, they'll actually link up, so if one activates, the other one will activate as well.
Okay.
With the lights, then you don't have to worry about activating your body cam at all, it might become on.
Oh, okay, cool, very good. Very nice, is this something we need to vote on then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, any more discussion on that? Yeah, okay, all right, can we get a motion?
I make a motion to, for the police department to purchase the ten eight body cams for three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Very good. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very nice. All right. Looking through this. This is thing for David.
It's just, no, it's nothing.
Uh, that, so that's a, um, I just got that quote for the little orange cubes. It's a company that comes in, they pretty much insulate inside of the lift stations, so it, you get a little more. Lifespan out of it, instead of going in and repairing, it's supposed to save some of the concrete in there and everything, it's supposed to help everything. Last longer. Um, I had, they came out and did a demo, not a demonstration, but. They came out, wanted to look at us and then got us a, that quote, um, yeah, the little orange cubes, that's what it looks like. When they spray it, um. I, I had told him, I said, more likely it wouldn't happen this year, but it'd be something we'd look at along the lines of next year.
How long has those lift station, lift stations been in there? You're supposed to know it all, Trina.
Now, my normal response to that would be ask Ron, but Ron's not here, so.
They've been in a long time, as far as that goes, instead of, it's something for us to definitely look into. You know, if we could have them cleaned and then have them lined, then that would guarantee you another fifteen years. As far as instead of having this been probably.
Said in all likelihood, that would. If, if we went through that, you know, here, within the next year or two, that would last me till I retired from the towns, so.
Yeah.
So that'd be something that you could have them come to a meeting sometime like next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do a presentation.
I think it's definitely something to look at, you know, for sure.
I told him I'd, I'd give the papers and samples to you guys, just to at least put it in your heads for now.
Absolutely, very good. Okay, so. Is that it for department reports?
Yep.
Yes, have any questions from the visitors?
No questions, but, well, yeah, maybe, I was hoping Fountain City Forward would be here tonight, because it's their problem. They are taking over next year, correct, for, for, uh.
Levi Coffin dates?
Yeah.
That's what I've been told.
That's what I've told, okay, anyway, from the parade. Future farmers had a float full of hay bales. Well, they pulled over in school life. Threw them all on the ground. And then, instead of just putting them in the pickup truck that was sitting two bays down. They did it again, threw them in the truck, spread hay everywhere. But me being old and. Not crazy, I didn't wildever and attack sixteen people, but had made a hell of a mess and I think finally. Because you were talking about something last time I was here about. Grass and leaves and stuff, so all that crap went into the street. And it's not in the street now, so I'm guessing it's in our sewers. But that was the thing about that. And, oh. I don't know, a year, two years, I don't remember, we were doing something with the parking over here behind the basketball court. I know we fixed the part here, are, then were they still going to do the? West side?
Well. Where the, where it's paved, the school did that, but the parking stumps. It got started and then we lost an employee, so it kind of got put on.
I know, of course, I live right across the street, so, built it.
Yeah, that's why they're just kind of still in a pile out there. It'll probably get done, let's cross our fingers, next, next year when it gets, nice weather starts coming, they can get it finished.
Well, I can't remember what it was, it was heavily important.
Yeah, and write it down.
I did, but I picked up a wooden pad. My final note on a lighter scale. You know, we got the new phone booth down at the park. Okay, I just want to know who's paying that bill, is it Fountain City Forward or is it us, or are they collecting calls?
It's, it's not a real phone.
It's not a real phone, it's a therapy, so in other words.
He's, he's being funny.
Oh, okay.
I said a lighter note, man, pay attention.
That's, that's Mr. Parker's dry sentence here.
Yeah, I said he wasn't crazy.
I, I think, I think the one above pays that bill, he peppers that bill.
Okay, I'm gonna collect the money down there if we were gonna pay for it. I'm tired.
All righty.
All right. All right, that's it for visitors forum. Um, can we get? Approval of claims and payments, can we get a motion on that?
I make a motion to approve claims and payments.
Second.
I guess I have to second it. I, I'd, you know, really like to know, like, these net salaries, I mean, who, who, who were, who. They are for, it's just payroll, net salaries and to amounts and. There, I mean, there's several on here, I'm just, I, I would like to know whose payroll these. Pertain to. You know, is, is it David, is it?
I'm not the, that's the way that the reports break down, it don't break them down into individual names, it breaks it down into funds. And that's, that's how it is, that, that's not me, that's the way they're formatted. That's the software.
So it could be a combination of multiple employees.
It's everybody's payroll that comes out of general, they're all lumped together. So you have two payrolls and a pay period usually, some, there's three. So there's two different dates on the payrolls. But one date, it's everybody that got paid out of that fund. So you got your general, your water, your sewer, it's all grouped together, it's not separated out, so that's not just one person's pay.
Okay, so do you second?
I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
All in favor or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.